Our vision is we believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. Our mission, the school district development partnership with the community prepares our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. So with that, I call the meeting to order. Are you ready for plug 4? Oh, sorry. Hold on.
Let's leave this to July 11th. I'm the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I enter the motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion from John, a second from Tracy. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Enter any motion on the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on June 9th, 2025 as presented.
Thank you, Rick.
Second.
Second from Jen. Any questions on the minutes? I had sent a question to Chelsea because I noticed in the public comments, there was no note that even we had had any public comments. And so I think.
Yeah, what we'll do is we haven't been, for quite a while, we haven't noted who speaks to public comments, but it's a good idea. So moving forward, it doesn't look like there's anybody tonight, but starting tonight and moving forward, we'll note the name of the person and which agenda it is.
Thank you.
Question, do you mark if there is no public comment thing?
That's what it typically says.
Okay. I know that was changing.
Any other questions on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Action on vouchers.
I'll move to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $317,040 and $0.38 as presented.
Second.
A motion from Tracy, a second from John. Any questions on the vouchers? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. I didn't check the sheet, but there's nobody here, so I'm assuming there's no public comments. Okay. Then we move on to the hot highlights. Sarah.
Hello, everybody. Just going to give a quick update for you all about summer school. Hopefully, you've been seeing lots of amazing posts that Kerry Plumb has been putting out, highlighting some of the students and action. Really appreciate that. I feel like it really kind of brings it to life in the community and people can see that those things happening. We have four sites again this year. We have Milton East Elementary, Northside Middle School, and the high school. Each of those has between 30 and 40 summer school employees. So it's a big operation to have all those people. We have 17 classes at East, 21 at Northside, 13 at the middle school, and then 12 enrichment classes at the high school, plus all of the academic classes that happen up there. So a couple of our new classes this year we're excited about. We have a Lego building class, and that's really taking off. There's a teacher who's been and talks to maybe teen teach that next year and have 30 kids a session because we think it would fill. So kids just love the Legos. We have a new art class taught at Northside called Swiftie Session, which is taught by Mrs. Mahoney, one of the art teachers at Northside during the school year. And it's art through the Taylor Swift eras. And they do different themes around friendship and perseverance and all kinds of character themes. And so the kids are having a ball there. We have a new class up at the high school called Model Rocketry. They did have their first rocket launch, which was a huge success. And I was on a field trip hiking, so I didn't get to see that one, but I was appreciative of the videos to see that in action. And the kids are really into it. I did a tour with the net and stopped by that class, and children were sharing some very scientific information with me that I cannot repeat right now because it was way over my head. These were fifth and sixth graders who were just very excited about rocketry. And we have brought back some classic classes that we hadn't had because we hadn't had instructors for a couple of years. So we brought Matt Old McDonald, who had some vowels, which is an early literacy class. And the kids do art projects and do a vowel sound every day. And the club fit class, so Katie Grady, one of our school sites, she's teaching club fit. And it's been fun to see the kids, how excited they get for building their endurance on the walking track over at Northside every day. Just want to give a shout out. We have a few people that are right at that like 30 years of working with summer school, Mark. And so Sherri Buescher and Chris Dee, who are both special educators in the district, are right around that 30 years of doing summer school. Dave Benlin, who's a retired science teacher from Milton High School, comes back to us every summer and teaches field biology. And that's another very popular class. And then we have a couple of teachers that teach in other districts. Tom Davy has run baseball for us for about 30 years. And then Mike Platts has been involved in basketball for all that time. So it was a shout out to the loyalty of those folks to come back every single summer, as well as all the people. Just we can't do it without the people. So when you think about that, we did our first payroll, and Deborah and I had that. It all worked. And so that was great because we had some hiccups there with tech. But you know, it's a lot of people to make that happen, and we're grateful for all that support from staff because the students and families really appreciate it. So do you have any questions for me? I'll give the full report in September. I can lighten up numbers and stuff then.
I will just say, I did the tour and we got to peek into every class. As we went by the Taylor Swift class, the music was drifting out. You knew exactly what class you were back into. And the kids were so happy. Although, I have to say, every class I walked in, two kids were having fun. And I think what really struck me is, I know we call them enrichment classes, but we were in the fishing class. The fish, and he was talking about lures and weights and how deep the weights went and how they had to figure it out. And that's solid curriculum, right? Almost every single class when I went in, there were connections being made. Even in the chocolate classroom, they were talking about the science of how chocolate grows. And they're, I think they're loosely enrichment because I saw curriculum being integrated in really fun and unique ways in every room we drifted to.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad that you noticed that. It's very true. The teachers are very intentional about that. The children don't even realize that they're learning as much as they're learning. They're just having a great time.
So thank you, Chris. We've really enjoyed ours.
All right, thank you.
We are on to the school finance roadmap update.
Yeah, I wanted to update the board that with the date set for the school finance roadmap session this summer, we have sent out invitations to folks that have taken part in some of our focus groups in the past, but also done advertising to anyone in the community that's interested in attending. So that is on July 15th at 6:30 PM here on the PDC. So it'll be here before you know it. And Kerry is getting message out on social media. She's been working with local newspapers to get info out. We'll also send an email blast out to parents to let them know. And we've reached out, as we shared earlier, to each of our municipalities and invited anyone from who's on the board from any of our municipalities to join us that evening.
Do you ever get inquiries from other districts about how or why we do it? Just curiosity.
About how or why we offer that?
That's, yeah, that's.
With this being the first year that we've done a session on this, and last year we did actual focus groups, but this year will be the first time that we started doing just the summer school finance 101. I anticipate that we probably will get some questions, but we haven't yet.
Cheers.
And then there was one other thing that I wanted to add under the superintendent's update. It kind of falls under the Red Hawk highlights. I wanted to know that 12 from our leadership team are going to be attending a conference this week and the end of this week in Green Bay. And we're really excited about that. It's titled Creating a Culture of Excellence for All. And it's a joint conference put together by OSSA, WAST, the CSAS, and the Wisconsin Center for Education Research out of UW Madison. So there's some really high-quality speakers and breakout sessions. So most of our principals and a couple of our directors and I are going to spend a few days in Green Bay learning together. We're looking forward to it. At the next first floor meeting in July, we'll give an update on how that might.
Finance committee, Tracy.
Finance committee. The finance committee met on Thursday, June 12th. There were two items on the agenda, the district insurance withdrawals for 2526 and the 2526 preliminary budget update. First item is informative only and details the increase by coverage line. The overall increase year over year is 7.5%, primarily driven by workers' compensation and cyber insurance. The increase in workers' compensation premium is the result of the increase in the district's experience modification rate or MOD. The increase in the MOD is the result of some high-cost claims in prior years that will impact the district's premiums for the next two budget cycles until they fall off the calculation. The increase in the cyber premium is industry-wide and is the result of a combination of factors, including the increasing frequency and severity of cyber attacks, the high cost of ransomware scams, and the complex nature of mitigating cyber risks. The second item on the agenda is an action item tonight for the board. The preliminary budget being presented tonight will be the basis for the annual meeting in August. The preliminary budget is based on current information and will be updated when more information about the state's budget is known. It contains the increases in staff compensation, increase in healthcare, insurance, and transportation. The preliminary budget being presented is balanced, includes debt defeesment using the existing F-39 debt service balance, and includes the planned withdrawal from Fund 80 for the soccer field lighting project.
Before we move on to a latter topic, any questions on the insurance for the next year? Tracy mentioned the largest increase we have in our premium increase is in workers' compensation due to some of those high-cost claims. We had a number of injury pieces due to staff student contact that increased our mod point of it. Our mod's actually pretty going from 1.37 and then last policy year to 1.63, which we want that number to be closer to 1. So we've got that all year. Doing better now than two years ago.
That's how often do you go up for our P&amp;D?
So we work with our brokerage firm, the TriCore, and we look at competing packages in that area. EMC has been carrying most of our policies for the last seven years. Right now, the only thing that's not carried by EMC is our secret policy through Instox. But when I talked to Keith over the last couple of months, we did look at what carriers are out there. You've got your little individuals and a few others, but there's not a lot of competitive managers in these policies. And many groups have stopped writing the school's advisory title. Chelsea, if you could put these slides up, we're going to start there as I go through them real quick. So for tonight, we do have the preliminary budget for discussion, and the finance committee will review some of the highlights of this, some of the slides, and go through what happened these last several months to develop this budget. At the beginning of the presentation, I have some of our key assumptions. We've known since the last binding budget that we're anticipating a 325 per pupil increase revenue limit. This is at the moment a secure number to work with, given some discussion is very portable and how the last line of the veto that other keepers did has been affirmed at the moment at this three-point level. So we have been using that 325 calculations. In our membership calculations or enrollment calculations for this fall, we'll see in a couple of slides later on as well, but we're anticipating a relatively flat three-year average enrollment. So when we talk later on about the relevant calculation. And here as well, there's a declining enrollment exemption that we've been utilizing in the relevant formula for several years as our general figure evidence will be followed. This will be the first year in a couple of years where our one-year enrollment is actually the same as it was last year. So we're seeing a turnaround on our three-year average. Previous years, we had a declining enrollment exemption of $300,000 to $400,000. I'm anticipating that to be close to $110,000 to $320,000. There's still stability in the revenue calculation itself. In open enrollment and voucher people per pupil estimates, that is currently at the 325 per pupil. There is some discussion at the state level around the change in voucher payment amount and open enrollment amount. Since we don't have a finalized budget yet, I'm holding firm on a $325 increase in that multiplier. Time will tell when we'll update that. Our general aid pool at state level, we had anticipated to be relatively flat for the next year. Again, there's some news out of the state, but the state pool is going to be exactly that, that they completely collapsed. And the impacts of that are yet to be seen. We'll be watching for more information about the July 1 estimate coming week. And hopefully, we'll get the state budget here next month. At the moment, though, we took the total revenue authority, anticipated to increase just under 2%. Notwithstanding any further changes from the joint finance proposal or inevitable government funding budget. On the next slide, just as a constant reminder, we saw a lot of this slide in previous years. We are currently in a state funding gap of what happened post Pac-10. And the per pupil amount gap we're looking at as of this year is about $3,300 per pupil. The current state budget does not close this gap. It does increase the 325 dollars per pupil on the authority level. We still have a moderate amount to get to where we should be prepared for completion. For upcoming year planning, we know that last year, we had an increase in the low revenue ceiling to $11,000. This was certainly a welcome increase, but over the last couple of years, the budget development work I've done with this board and the district college, we've utilized that authority on some one-time projects that this board has authorized and included. And now all the funding that came to the low revenue ceiling is in operational costs or staff costs in the budget today. For the 2526 school year, this is the last year of our current $2.5 million on recurring referendum. And as we saw last fall, Plumb did approve a $5 million recurring referendum that will take it back to next year. Once again, just to mention for planning purposes, we know that the 2527 budget is still not finalized, and there are delays expected here as late as this week. There are a lot of things up in the air right now, including general aid distribution, special education, categorical reimbursements, per pupil aid, mental health, and federal funding impacts are to be addressed. In the protocol calculation, I have on the next slide, an increase in our September membership from the current year fall number of 3309 to 3330, same as 2324, per pupil increase of $320 per pupil. Per pupil categorical aid is frozen and has been for the last four to five years. Our equalization aid growth is one number I'm watching. We'll have that number finalized later this summer. This past year, we had an adjustment for the city of Janesville that caused our total equalized value to increase much less than anticipated. And right now, I'm anticipating at least 4.5% increase in total equalized value. If anything, I expect that number to be low at this point. Total Fund 10 will increase about $1.3 million over the fall 2425 budget. And the fund balance at the moment is anticipated to remain stable. We'll be finishing up the year here in the next six days, which is shocking. And we'll be working to bring those numbers to the board for the annual meeting. And we'll, of course, be back here in December, January, if you don't mind. On the next slide, more information on the preliminary budget revenue limit. The base revenue figure for the current year was $37.3 million with the $325 per pupil. We anticipate our base revenue to be about $38.1, bringing our maximum revenue per virtual to about $10,675. The current three-year average anticipated for this fall is going to be $33.51. So our base revenue calculation with new dollars is $39.1 million. On the next slide, we have a quick highlight of the last year, the nonrecurring referendum, $2.5 million. This coming year, 26.7, we will see a significant change in our total nonrecurring exemptions. We'll have a decrease by the $2.5 million, but with any luck, we'll have our declining enrollment exemption start to evaporate as well. Our total revenue at this point, though, is anticipated to be just over $42.2 million. The preliminary budget in total, the general fund, is anticipated to be $50,412,245. As Tracy had mentioned at the beginning, there are two funds that are out of balance on this sheet, three actually. But the debt service fund or referendum has an expected revenue for the annual calendar year 2026 payments of $3.9 million. An anticipated expense in that same calendar year of about $7 million. If you recall, the last couple of years, we've been decreasing our defeesment strategy for Fund 39. We currently have about $3 million sitting in Fund 39 fund balance. I'll be working with my team to put together a defeesment package for the $3 million to avoid future interest payments for back end of the capital referendum. The capital projects fund, this is the first year we've been able to utilize those funds as of April 2025. In February, we previewed some of the projects we're going to be targeting for Fund 46 for this first year. And that's represented here in the 2526 budget at about $565,000. These would be the completion of the Northside Chillers project, the high school sound system, and the roof section, I believe it's roof section number six that we discussed back in February. The community services fund, again, is also out of balance for the revenues and expenditures reflecting the district portion of the soccer lighting project at Children's Park to be discussed in our last meeting. So quickly, in summary, total general fund is anticipated to increase about 2.6%. The 325 is per pupil is in place for the foreseeable future. We know this is still hammering inflation, but these are the tips we've been dealt at this point. I do want to highlight again that the July 1 estimate, which is due out in less than, about a week actually, is likely to be based on the 2325 state budget, since we will likely not have a budget approved by the time GPI submits their calculation. That being said, if there are any news items regarding July 1 estimate, please read them with caution because we know that without an approved state budget, this number will not be correct. And we have to get the new state data appropriation in place before we get a new calculation number from the front. We'll continue to revise the 2526 budget ahead of the annual meeting as information becomes available. That is scheduled for August 25th, 2025. And at this point, we're looking for approval of the preliminary budget so that we can continue operations forward. Any questions?
I'll move to approve the 2526 preliminary budget as presented.
I'll say.
So Tracy, a second from John. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you, Austin. Rick, ask the committee.
Okay, thank you. Just one policy item to take care of tonight. That's the second reading of the new legal policy for 2411, third grade promotion and retention at risk students. Just a reminder, this was a policy that was discussed at our last meeting. It is kind of a time-sensitive topic because it needs to be adopted by July 1st, even though enforcement will be delayed until September 1st. I don't know if anyone has any questions at all about this, because policy is a serious issue in terms of future. Otherwise, I'm going to make a motion to approve the new legal policy for 2411, third grade promotion and retention at risk students as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from you. A second from Ed. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Human resources. Rick.
Okay, human resources came in at last week, on June 17th. First item is discussion of possible action on summer school staffing for July and August 2025 and June 2026. Every year, the HR and payroll departments collaborate with the summer school administrator to determine staffing levels and hours needed for the upcoming summer school sessions. As we prepare for the 202526 academic year, we're currently evaluating our staffing requirements for July and August of this year, as well as June of 2026. We try to rise the student enrollment and additional instructional day for the June 2026 four-week program and mandatory training video requirements for summer staff. HR department and the summer school administrator recommend increasing both teaching and support staff positions, along with expanding total work hours. Beginning June 2026, our summer school program will introduce intensive reading interventions aligned with Act 20, necessitating the addition of three teacher position positions to our staffing plan. Any questions at all regarding that?
How has this been built into the budget, the prelim budget? Is it in there? Is this in addition to?
Right now, we have everything up to date, specifically which I know, the whole thing. We've been in constant communication on everything going on there. We finished the payroll population to expel.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion that the number of special hours not exceed 7,769 and support staff hours not exceed 3,161 for the 202526 summer school program. Any additional hours not listed in the baseline will be subject to board policy 40211, brought forward to the board for review and possible approval.
Second.
So a motion from Rick, a second from Jen. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item is discussion of possible action on 202526 athletics activities advisory and intern staffing baseline. Each year, the athletics activities, human resources, and payroll departments work together to determine staffing baseline needs for coaching, advisory, and extracurricular positions. On May 22nd, 2025, the board approved the addition of a wrestling coach and restructuring of the marching band program for the 202526 school year. Included in the board materials are the letters of appointment for coaching and advisor positions, as well as a template letter of appointment for interns. The full list of interns, coaches, and advisors for 202526 are also provided for the board's Any questions on that?
I'll move the 247 support staff athletics activities advisory and intern positions based staff baseline use for the 202526 year and the 202526 athletics activities advisory and intern wages as presented.
Second.
Second motion from Jen, a second from Ed. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries.
And lastly, we have a dissent FYI to the board to review and propose additions and changes to the employee handbook for 2526. The HR team is currently partnering with USI's Division of HR Solutions to review and update the district's employee handbook. The corporation received that from staff and legal counsel. The HR committee has reviewed several proposed revisions for the upcoming year with further discussion scheduled for our next HR committee meeting in July. Our goal is to present the updated employee handbook to the board on July 28th for review and potential approvals. So we'll stay tuned for more information on this topic. Any questions on that? Great, that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Presentation Jeff Athletics and Activities Report.
So every year I do this, and it seems to be getting longer every year, so I'm going to try to summarize this pretty quick for you guys. First and foremost, looking at activities and athletics. Point number one here right away is academic excellence. Maintains a priority of ours to, you know, student athletics or students for athletics seconds if you look at that. Try 3, student athletics GPA 3.48 is a phenomenal number. And really, that was up almost a whole 10-point from a year ago, so that's great. Looking at special events, we had two really big special events this year that brought the whole community together and celebrated some milestones for us, the dedication to Jerry Slim Stadium and the varsity baseball field recognition. Were two really large community events that were pretty phenomenal events that kind of put our district kind of center stage and bring the community together, and those were wonderful. Moving on to Red Hawks playing collegial league. This year, we had 23 athletes commit to play athletics at the next level, which is by far the most event that's kind of escalated every year, which is great. It's a great number. Shows the dedication of our athletes and families. The big historical thing that we had kind of occur this year was the girls' wrestling team, which they have definitely received their fair share of fanfare. But again, they were the first ever NIA girls' team state champions in Division One. They received a state of Wisconsin citation, accommodation, multiple teams of the month, things like that. Coach Pat Yonk was the girls' wrestling coach of the year in the state of Wisconsin. So that was a very historical event as well. Also, I'll touch base real quick, the spring, a rarity, something. I mean, all of our teams have phenomenal success. We have championships up and down the line, individual success, team success. But also give a shout out to our boys golf team that qualified for Team State Golf this year, which is a very difficult task. And then Kate Bealman, finishing third in the state in Division One. He was down a stroke with, behind two guys who went to a playoff and ended up down two strokes, but he was right there and had a phenomenal tournament as well. So congratulations to Kate. Another thing of note is Boys and Girls Across, very first season that we participated in that when they're called with Janesville. And that was, for all intents and purposes, very successful for getting a program off the ground in year one. So that was great. On the activity side, club side, marching band finished third again in the state in their state competition. We're sending three wonderful students. We're sending three wonderful students to FBLA Nationals in San Diego coming up very shortly here. And currently right now, our FFA and social studies trips are in Australia and Eastern Europe, which are great experiences for kids as well. So they're fantastic highlights. The last thing I want to touch on real quick is something that's brand new this year. Milton Bay Program. There's also attached some board docs for you guys to look at. This is a brand new program that we started this year to try to simplify our culture, the things we want with our athletic program. And so basically what it is, it's a competition between all of our sports teams in five categories, academic achievement, community service, school improvement, development, and competitive success, and finally Red Hawk support, where we reward teams for supporting other teams or even marching band or show choir or attending other events. Big point system, it's really elaborate. I shared with you kind of the founding document that kind of sets and establishes all of that up. But for year one, that is incredible amount of work. We gave a shout out to Sarah Breckel, who we hired as a millimeter advisor to assist me in data collection and managing all this stuff. But I firmly believe that this new program moving forward, next five, 10 years, that's going to be a cornerstone of our department and something that is celebrated. So what was fantastic this year in the fall, we have a fall, winter, spring season, winners, and then we'll do a grand champion that we're going to celebrate, very homecoming week at the pep rally, big bunch of hoopla. So congratulations to, our fall winner was cross-country, winter winner was girls' basketball, and just calculated a few days ago, spring, our girls' soccer team doing that. So that is the report. So congratulations to those teams as well.
Absolutely. I have a quick question on the program. So you looked at the size of the teams that some of the teams that we have and it built it. I mean, I'm going to bring football team up as an example. Is the cross-country team, you know, is there accommodations or is any difference is made with the size of the team?
Yeah.
Because I think it's the whole team has to go to an event, right?
For sure. And it's, you know, we, Sarah and I, we're going to meet later on this summer to debrief and recalibrate some things. Like the first time.
Absolutely, yeah.
There's a lot of wrinkles that I'm out, but we did try to accommodate the size of teams as a consideration. We also found things like inequities and we like, let's say, cheer or palms that don't compete, they can't win points for competitive success. But can we find ways to tweak the systems to benefit those? We found a lot of issues like that that we're going to iron out. But yeah, we try to take into everything into account. Like I said, with the amount of kids, the amount of programs we're talking about, it's a really, really in-depth process that we've worked through. We're going to, like I said, recalibrating that streamlining.
Yeah, the concept is amazing. I really, I really love that, what you guys have come up with, the amount of data, you must be my aim to come up with that.
I could, I could share like 10 that, but it's too many of that, so I shared that one. But yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah. So thank you to you and the team. I think it's a great idea. I was just curious on the intricacies of the difference of in, obviously track is 100 hits.
Right, like it's a lot easier to track girls' golf than football, if you have that right now, so.
Believe it, the track team, it's 100, it's 100 hits versus, you know, cross-country, which is like 30. So it's very, so kudos to you, Mr. Trump.
Any more questions, Jeff? Thank you. And you're up next for presentation.
Yeah, so basically, I don't have this in front of me, but it's our annual WIAA renewal for the next school year. That's something that has to be done every year. So we need an approval to maintain our membership of the WIAA. And then that way, when and if that is approved, that league is for the board president to complete and sign, so we make that official.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of WIAA membership for the 2025-26 school year.
A second.
I have a motion from Rick, a second from Tracy. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. And I wrote it in big letters and put a star next to it, so.
Thank you.
Get that done before I leave tonight. Thank you for the reminder. We are on to miscellaneous, action on staffing reports.
I'll move to approve the staffing report as presented.
A motion from Tracy, a second from Rick. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Action on gifts and donations.
I'll move to approve the gifts and donations we've granted.
Second.
A motion from Jen, a second from Tracy. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Meeting dates.
We have a few upcoming meetings and highlights and things that are coming up over the summer. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Monday, July 14th at 6:30 here in the PDC. We have a couple of committee meetings scheduled. Governance meeting on Tuesday, July 22nd at 6:30. Annette and John are going to be attending WASD Summer Learning Symposium in Stevens Point on July 11th through 12th. I mentioned earlier that we have our school finance roadmap session on Tuesday, July 15th at 6:30 PM here in the PDC. We have our data workshop scheduled for July 28th after the regular board meeting. We have board members will be getting an invitation to Milton High School Student Council Breakfast. If you haven't gotten that already, that's on August 7th at 7:30 AM. So we will post that since all board members are invited to it. But again, that's at Milton High School, August 7th at 7:30 AM. And that's the High School Student Council Breakfast that they've got. And then the board development session is on Wednesday, August 20th at 6:30 PM. And that will also be here in the PDC. The one meeting that we're still trying to schedule is an HR committee meeting in July, between the two July board meetings. Chelsea reached out and heard back from each of the committee members, but there wasn't common availability from the responses. So we will look at calendars and send out some more possible dates and times for that. If at all possible, I know summer schedules get busy, but if at all possible, we want to have all three committee members there. We have some things with HR that we want to go through with those. So that'll be sometime between the two board meetings in July.
I would just like to remind everyone that if you have any agenda items or like for our first meeting in July, please get them due by Friday. Any other?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
A motion from Tracy, a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Thank you all. All right, and see you in this.